But now they got it bent 130 degrees. I mean, it's pretty good. And you know, now I can do some walking at least and try to get a little weight off. It's tough with football, Anthony. I can watch those Bills. That's a long day, man. You gotta stay away from guard during those happy hours in wing days.
Do you have a total knee replacement?
Yeah, oh yeah, I got both of them done. I had the left one done about six years ago.
Oh, I didn't know.
November 19th. And the funny thing is, Anthony says, well, you got about 20-year guarantee. So look, next time I need a knee replacement, I'll be in Glendale. You won't have to worry about doing it.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Hey, I gotta be careful. Pete DeMoles online. You don't know about these Times Union guys. Go back to mute.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Connected East City Council Committee meeting for Monday, January 4, 2021. Toward the, and we'll go right into public safety. This is a placeholder item from prior week's review of the guidelines by law for the civilian police review board with the repeal of the 58. Ms. Porterfield, would you want to say something?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mudibaren. So as he said, as Mr. Mudibaren says, this is just a placeholder. We've discussed it on numerous occasions. And I've sent information and asked other council members to provide their input in terms of section, chapter 93 of the city code. I know that, you know, there's the police reform, and then there's this chapter 93, which is really our work to do and not left up to the police reform task force that was created. So it made sense to me for us to bring it forward at the same time, since we're talking about police reform.
Let me tell you what, every time I won Gary, I came home hurting more than anything else. But now they got it bent 130 degrees. I mean, it's, it's pretty good and you know, now I can do some walking at least and try to get a little, little weight off. It's tough with football, Anthony. I can watch those Bills. That's a long day, man. You gotta stay away from Gardner in those happy hours and wing days.
Do you have a total knee replacement?
Yeah, oh yeah, I got both of them done. I had the left one done about six years ago.
Oh, I didn't know.
November 19th and the funny thing is Anthony says, well, you got about 20 year guarantee. I said, look, next time I need a knee replacement, I'll be in Glendale. You won't have to worry about doing it.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
Hey, I gotta be careful. Pete DeMoles online. You don't know about these Times Union guys. Go back to mute.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Connected East City Council Committee meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2021. To order and we'll go right into public safety. This is a placeholder item from prior week's review of the guidelines by law for the civilian police review board with the repeal of the 58. Ms. Porterfield, would you want to say something?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mute Baron. So as he said, as Mr. Mute Baron says, this is just a placeholder. We've discussed it on numerous occasions. And I've sent information and asked other council members to provide their input in terms of section, chapter 93 of the city code. I know that, you know, there's the police reform and then there's this chapter 93, which is really our, our work to do and not left up to, to the police reform task force that was created. So it made sense to me for us to bring it forward at the same time, since we're talking about police reform. So what I'm asking my colleagues again is to just make sure we're taking a look at it and then we make the changes, the recommended changes. I know that there's something, some coming from the civilian police review board that we would want to take a look at. That once we get all of that and any recommended changes from the council members that we discuss that and if there's any input at all from the FIN Institute, certainly take that in consideration. However, I don't see it as us waiting to change our legislation that's currently on the books until the whole police reform review is done by the state government. Because I think that's going to be a long process. So just keeping that in mind in the next couple of weeks, hopefully after the CPRB has met, we'll get their input and we'll be able to come to the table to discuss this. Again, everybody has gotten all the documentation several weeks ago. If you need me to send it again, I'm willing to do that. But that we should look at our, that we should look at our legislation and make sure that it's a, it meets the needs of the current, the current needs of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mute Baron.
Thank you. Ms. Porterfield, do you by any chance have the invite for the next meeting?
I have not received an invitation from Mr. Shave yet. I will reach out to him after this meeting to, to make sure that it goes out to all council members, to ask that it goes out to all council members. So we're aware when that meeting happens and anyone that wants to, to join in can, should be able to do that. I'll do that today.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right. You're welcome.
Any other business for public safety?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So the, the city development and planning, I want to open this up, but I believe and Mr. Colden can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe all these need to be discussed in executive session because they are contracts.
That's correct.
So I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll see you on the other side. Thank you.